United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pray with me please. We're come to you so thankful for the many blessings that you've given us, or thank you for this community that we live in and this school district that we have the opportunity to serve. We pray to be with each and every board member here tonight. Give us wisdom in all decisions that we make. Help us to always act in the best interests of the students and the faculty. Let's always glorify you in all that we do. Please be as everyone as they travel home tonight. We are singing Jesus' name. Amen. We'll call this meeting to order. Note that the agenda was posted in a timely fashion. We do have a quorum present with two board members absent. Next item on the agenda is recognition of Students of the Month in the board conference room. If the board will come around to the front and have a recognition.
Welcome parents, grandparents, community members. We have our soaring Cardinals here tonight, and we're going to start with Ms. Pace's class, our soaring Cardinals. We'll start with Clayton McAnally. Clayton is kind and polite. He is very smart, and he works hard in the class every day. He is a student I can count on and always do the right thing. He is a friend to all. Clayton McAnally. All right Clayton, I have a treat for you. Next is Ms. Stacy Pace's classroom. We have Aspen Woodall. Come on down. Miss Aspen is sweet and a friend to everyone. She works very hard. She's always willing to do whatever I need her to do without any complaint. Ms. Aspen Woodall. We have Haley Adaway. All right, Ms. Haley is always willing to lend a helping hand with anyone. She gives her best both in and out of the classroom. She comes in with the biggest and brightest smile each morning. Haley is a joy to teach. Thank you. In Ms. Gordon's class, we have Ms. Karis Henderson. Come on down. Karis is a respectable and responsible student. She has what it takes to be a soaring Cardinal. Karis is a joy to teach. And in Mrs. Jones's first grade, Silas Kleagle. Silas is kind, trustworthy, and a team player. You can always count on him when you need a helping hand. I'm so grateful, he is a maud Cardinal. A soaring Cardinal at that. And next in second grade, Ms. Efferson's class, Claire Steele. Claire is a great student. She is kind, helpful, smart, and is always willing to share some fantastic stories with you. She is a thlamazing example of a soaring Cardinal. And in Mrs. Norris's class, we have Mia Sue. Mia is an awesome student and a great role model for her peers. She's always kind to everyone and she works hard at everything she does. She's truly a joy to teach. Here you go Mia. Take this from Ms. Seeger. All right, and now for my amazing staff members of the month. First, we have Ms. Nurse Kara Sutton. Nurse Kara is a comforter, a problem solver, and oftentimes a superhero in disguise. Whether it's treating a scraped knee, calming anxious nerves, or managing the complexities of health plans, Kara does it all with grace and compassion. And our next staff member of the month, Mrs. Carter. Mrs. Carter is our amazing fourth grade reading teacher. With unmatched patience and creativity, she transforms challenging lessons into exciting journeys, making every student feel capable and confident. Mrs. Carter, thank you for opening doors to endless possibilities for your students. The harsh secondary organization of the month. We have one organization but two teams within that organization. So, we're going tonight to recognize our Maude Lady Cardinal volleyball program. But we're going to start with our Junior High Lady Cardinals. So Coach Blackburn and our Junior High Lady Cardinals, come on up.
Thank you. How are you all doing? Good. Thanks.
Okay, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to let the ladies introduce themselves. They're going to tell you their name, their grade, and something great about this year. And then I'm going to let Coach Blackburn, she knows a lot more of their situation, but she's going to tell you why these girls, and specifically a couple of them, while they are part of our organization of the year. So we're going to start with Brynlee down here.
I'm Brynlee Henderson. I'm in seventh grade, and my favorite thing about volleyball, I've said it, I remember it so quickly.
My favorite thing about volleyball, for the people, I love everybody that we played with, and I'm really proud of them.
My name is Madison Becky, and I'm in eighth grade, and my favorite memory is that we were undefeated all year.
My name is Corley Cunningham. I'm in the eighth grade, and my favorite part about volleyball, especially this year, was how close we all grew together playing.
My name is Corley Zeke, and I'm in seventh grade. My favorite thing about volleyball is...
I'm Brynlee Henderson. I'm in the seventh grade, and my favorite thing about volleyball is Ms. Blackburn. She's an amazing coach. I loved hanging out with everybody and Chloe.
This group is a wonderful group. They work hard, they get along, and whatever I say they do. And I really appreciate that. And they really molded well together and worked hard together. And the eighth graders were actually undefeated in the seventh graders and eighth graders, so that's a big accomplishment.
That's right. They were undefeated season, won the hockey tournament, and I mean, these ladies have set the stage, and that's what we want is to, you're going to see the wonderful accomplishments of our varsity, but to know that we've got other players coming behind, and that's a good thing for our program. And so that's why these ladies are part of our organization of the month, as well as Coach Blackburn and all the hard work and effort she puts in and the time and energy to help these ladies get ready for high school. So, one half of our organization of the month, our Junior High Lady Cardinals and Coach Blackburn. So the other half of our organization of the month is actually our Lady Cardinals, our varsity team with Coach Blackburn and Coach Bishop. So if they will, come on up.
I got fired.
Come on. And Coach Bishop, come in. Get your handshake.
We had a basketball tournament.
And I do, the ladies who want me to tell you that most of these girls just got back from a basketball tournament, so they wanted me to let you know that. I told them that it was fine, but they did want me to let you know, they did just get back from a basketball tournament. So, our Lady Cardinal volleyball team, they did a great job this season. I'm going to let Coach Father Gill tell you a little bit more about their accomplishments and everything, but to start off, I'm going to have the girls, they're going to tell you their name, their grade, and the position that they actually play.
I'm Casey. I'm in the fifth grade, and I'm a starter.
I'm Brooklyn. I was born. I'm in the eleventh grade, and I play opposite hitter.
I'm Emily Peverton. I'm in the, I'm tenth grade, and I'm a middle hitter.
My name's Kara. I'm in the tenth grade, and I'm a DS.
My name's Valerie. I'm in the twelfth grade, and I'm an outside hitter.
My name's Jason Pickering. I'm in the tenth grade, and I'm an outside hitter.
My name is Kayla. I'm in the tenth grade, and I'm a DS.
So Coach Father Gill's, come on up and tell a little bit about our Lady Cardinals.
Okay. No. Just things about this group that are important to note, they, a lot of them started out in varsity as freshmen and had a baptism by fire last year, and they grew a lot over the summer in their skill and in the way they competed and what they were able to accomplish this year. Coming into this as the head coach, I could not have imagined the start that we had and really the overall record that we ended up with, but we have set a new school record for a number of wins in a season with 22, and we have also, we also had the first winning record on a varsity level in school history the past 12 seasons, however long we've been playing. So, they have accomplished a lot. I was super proud of their efforts all year long and looking forward to what we're going to do next year, so there we go.
All right, well, our Lady Cardinals, Coach Father Gill and Coach Blackburn. I don't like words, they got to be right. Coach, you're out there. Our secondary staff member of the month is Amber Shelley. So I'm going to have Ms. Shelley come up. She's going to get to stand here beside me. I didn't say her name right, so while I write on her.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Ms. Shelley is our inclusion specialist at the secondary, and for those of you who do not know what that is, when our special education students, they go back into the regular education classrooms, we want to provide supports for them, and that's something new that we did this year. And Ms. Shelley has me going into all the classrooms to provide supports. One thing about Ms. Shelley, she goes above and beyond to support our students. She even, one day she and I were talking, and she said, "I'm going to go into the geometry classrooms so I can learn how Ms. Crater does it so I can teach it the same way." I don't know too many people that would do that. She always goes above and beyond, and our students are very blessed to have Ms. Shelley, as are we as a district. So, our secondary staff member of the month is Amber Shelley.
All right, so if everyone that got recognized tonight would meet out here in front of the crest and get a picture, everyone else, we appreciate you being here. You're not obligated to stay, but you're welcome to be going back if you'd like. Always have to be the best four hours of your life. All right, next item on the agenda is public comments. Next item is communications. All right, the consent agenda, we're going to look at the items, A, minutes of the October 21 regular meeting, the monthly financial report, amend the 24-25 budget, renew the district's property, automobile liability, and privacy and information security insurance with the Texas Association of School Boards Risk Management Fund, 88258, for 1-1-2025 through 12-31-2025, and accept $9,000 donation from Farmers Bank and Trust. Does any board member have anything in items A through E they would like to discuss or pull from the consent agenda for discussion? Do we have a motion to approve as presented?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Terry. We have a second.
I have a second.
Second by Josh. All favoriters, you're right hand. It's unanimous. Next is item F, River Valley Tractor. Does any board member want to discuss or pull? Do we have a motion to approve item F as presented?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Terry. We have a second.
I have a second.
Second by RJ. All favoriters, you're right hand. It's unanimous with one abstention. Now, Tim Roberts. All right, next item is information item, principals' report.
Okay, we'll start with our elementary report for the month. This is a long one. October was so busy, and November has been a whirlwind, but we have had a fun time in the elementary. Really excited. Lots of pictures to show. Okay, so we'll start with our attendance. Our attendance is sitting at 95.6 right now. It's a little down. We've had a lot of sickness going on lately. That's really all I can say about that. Our numbers are up at Redwater, but so anyway. I'm just trying to keep it funny. There you go. There you go. Okay, okay. So we had our staff members of the month. We had two this month because I wanted to recognize, we have so many staff members, and just 10 minutes of school's not enough. I have over 30 staff, so I wanted to be able to recognize at least more than one because they are doing such a great job down there. I'm so proud of those ladies. They are fantastic. And my coaches. Okay, let's see. First thing, we had Running J Ranch come out and visit our students. We partnered with them as far as, they brought out books for our kids, and our kiddos are writing letters back and forth to the horses at the ranch, so they brought a little pony out, and our kids will take a trip in five weeks after riding back and forth to them, because our kids will ride back to the horses, the horses will ride back to the kids, they're kind of like pen pals, and they'll take a visit out there to the ranch to see where the horses live, how they live, and what they're used for, and they'll talk to them about, you know, our special needs students who go out there and visit as well. And the elementary on, that was, that was right before Halloween, and then on Halloween, the day before, we had our elementary staff go through the offices, and we, in the office, the staff, we just decorated, and we had treats for them, and we kind of with them trick or treat, and they had a fun time with it. Then that night, we had movie night, and we had about, I want to say 75, 75 to 100 people out there. It was fantastic. The weather was perfect, and everything, it could not have went any smoother. It was wonderful. The kids loved it. David and I have been stopped at the store in Texarkana, parents telling us how fantastic it was, and they appreciate it and hope we do it again. So absolutely, it was really good. Then also that day, before that night, we had staff development, and teachers played the game, What Do You Mean?, and it's a teacher game, and they had a lot of fun doing that. Just some downtime. On the 31st, we did have instruction going on. Believe it or not, it was fantastic. We had, in science, they were doing science experiments, reading, they were doing reading games, it was just math, they were doing math Halloween games. The teachers, it just blew me away because I thought, okay, Halloween, this is going to be a blow-off day, the kids are just going to be out. No, those teachers were teaching, and instruction was going on. I'm very proud, very proud. Veteran's celebration was wonderful. The kids did a great job singing, Mr. Fannin and Ms. Martinez, and Ms. Crystal did a good job getting the kids ready for the program, and again, I'm proud of our children. They are very respectful, and they did it. They did a fantastic job. Our leadership committee, they planted, or didn't plant, but they put out flags around the school as a beautification project. And then we had our senior citizens Thanksgiving luncheon, where our council also served along with the middle school and the high school, and they met a lot of neat people in our community. We sent to the Ronald McDonald House 15 boxes of items our council took up. We had, instead of, what was it before? It was something, anyway, we did stop October instead of what they did last year, and basically it was stockings, to fill stockings with items that people, families at the Ronald McDonald House could use while they're there, and we got a really nice letter for, it's in the, it's in the back of your packet, from the Ronald McDonald House, saying how there's already one family that was able to benefit from it. And our kids did a great job bringing in things, and just, they just, they did a great job. On National Diabetes Day, our students also made the little blue ribbons to wear in honor of our students at school who have diabetes, and everybody participated. On November 13th, it was World Kindness Day, and we kicked the day off by serving our parents' hot chocolate. Did have one student tell me, when Mom drove and hit that dip, the hot chocolate went everywhere in the car, but it was, it was fun. They did a great job with that, too. We have a lot of stuff coming up. We have a perfect attendance party. I've started that this year, where I applaud the kids that have no absences or one absence, and we do a perfect attendance, and last month, we did popsicles, and they played outside. This month, we'll do popcorn, and they'll play if weather permitting. If not, we'll do popcorn and a party. Teachers will have a, or staff will have a turkey bowl on the 22nd also. I don't know if you guys heard about that, but our teachers will be bowling with turkeys with bowling pins. They'll sling the turkey and try to hit as many pins. The team that wins gets a turkey medal and a turkey to take home for Thanksgiving.
Is it live or frozen?
It's frozen. So, like David says, it's going to do a lot of damage, but it's okay. It'll still be. It's going to be completely frozen.
I remember saying that we need to have tarts.
We will start, whenever we come back in December, we'll start our M-class testing. That's what we use for data to see how our kids are growing in kindergarten through second, and we will compare our data to see how, what the gains are, or where there are deficits, and we'll move forward with more interventions. December 6th is a regular school day, and we will have 48 kids going to Texarkana for UIL. December 10th through 17th, we are going to have a Christmas store. It's called the Penguin Store. It is, they sent all of our stuff today. It's just a really simple little shop. Items cost from 25 cents to, I think $12 is the most expensive item. Every kid gets to shop. We have it set up to where, they've sent me items that students who do not get to participate, if they don't have money to shop, they'll be able to. I'll call them down as winners of a raffle, and they'll get to go shop for their families in there, so everybody gets to participate, and the kids are able to buy for their parents, their grandparents, their siblings out there. It's a really neat little...
I mean, kids are buying for the parents and grandparents.
So, no parents or grandparents allowed during the shopping time. On the 10th, we're going to have a dairy presentation. This is, Mr. Joe told us about this, and he's gotten, he's got with people, and they are going to come and present to our whole school. They'll park out here, and they'll milk for the kiddos. The 12th, we have the seniors for Cardinals, and the elementary will present this month. The 13th is our field trip to Running J Ranch, with kiddos to go out and see the horses that they've been corresponding back and forth with. On the 16th, we are having pictures with Santa. Santa's coming in the afternoon, and every child will have their picture taken, and I'm having cookies made by Ms. Neal, so they'll get cookies and a picture with Santa. We'll send the pictures home at the end of the week for the parents to have. Then on the 16th, we will also start circle testing for pre-K. That is our test that we, it shows growth for our pre-K students, and we use it as an intervention tool, so the students who are not progressing, we intervene for them. And we have our staff holiday luncheon on the 17th, early release on the 19th, and teacher work day in the afternoon, and on the 22nd, early release Christmas parties for the students. So at 8 o'clock, they'll have breakfast with their teachers, the parents can come in, and they'll do their Christmas party, and then they'll be ready to go home. That takes us through December. Any questions? Thank you. I'm going to wait here about all things Coach Blackburn.
I thought I heard Coach Father Gill's three ones until Josh started laughing, and I was like, oh gracious, I know what I said now. Oh goodness. Well, good evening. You'll see there on the left, we'll start with our attendance percentages. In red, we have our percentages that were lower than last month, and you'll see there, they are getting lower overall each month, and like Mrs. Seeger said, we're at that time of year where we have some illnesses going around. We've had some things hit us in the high school and the middle schools, so really working with our students to get them here and to be in attendance in classes. We, our overall enrollment has stayed very steady, though, so we're very proud of that. Our second, so secondary news that we have going on, our second six weeks attendance winners were our seventh grade and ninth grade students. So, those two groups, when we get back from the break, are going to get their Sonic drinks. We still have our readers or leaders challenge that's taking place in our middle school, and that'll go through the rest of this semester, so three weeks when we get back. Those students, again, 12 grade level books or 24 of the smaller easy readers, and Ms. Father Gill and Ms. Baskin are helping me to monitor that, and we will take our students, we'll do a movie day, and then we're going to have a play afternoon to treat them for being readers. Something real exciting we have over there on the secondary side is our Eastsport program. You can see there at the bottom, Overwatch 2, they've actually advanced to the quarterfinals of the Texas State Eastsport Playoff, and Fortnite, they played Slidell today, and I can tell you that they won. So, that team won as well. Right below that, in the team final, Team Maroon, which is made up of mainly our juniors and our freshmen, and Team White, which are seniors even in the program for... and our freshmen, and Team White, which are seniors even in the program for a few years. This is very neat. Mr. Brown and I were talking about this and I'll tell you kind of our thoughts if I can. They are both close to clinching a spot in the high school national championship game where we will play, it'll be Maude versus Maude in the national championship game. So we will have, be the national champion and possibly the first runner-up if, that they both make it. And right now, I was talking to Mr. Brown this morning, 'cause he actually presented an idea to me, if they both make it and they play each other, we're looking at actually broadcasting it for our students so that our students can see. So a lot of us don't really see what esports, what they actually do, because a lot of their games aren't until around four-thirty in the afternoon. So we've talked about broadcasting that so our students can be there to watch and then we'll have to see who's gonna get the, the most cheers, the seniors or the underclassmen. So hopefully that will work out, 'cause I would love to see an all-Maude national championship game take place. You'll see there on the second page, we actually had five of our seniors that went with Coach Father Gill last, in November, the beginning of November there to vote. And we actually had other seniors that went, but they went with their parents and everything. But we were really excited to see our seniors get involved in that process and, and exercise their right to vote. Our student council, they've been really busy. Like Ms. Seager said, they did help participate with Stop October. They've also started their canned food drive that they are helping with the elementary and then our Toys for Tots campaign that will take place on the middle and high school side of campus. They also helped to host our Veterans Day breakfast and program. And we actually had a record number of veterans attend this year, we had thirty-nine. So we were very excited to see our numbers grow and be able to recognize and honor those heroes. They then, after that, actually went to the Waterford Facilities. And we've done this for a couple of years where they go and they help serve lunch and they get to visit with veterans. And the veterans there really love it and we, we participate in that event and it's, it's really good for our students as well. They hosted our Drug Free Week and we had several guests that came out to our Drug Free Rally. We kind of switched it up a little bit this year. We actually had a nurse, a pharmacist, a counselor, of course Officer Sean Vaughn with Texarkana Texas Police Department, several of our school organizations here. And they came out and we really focused on being healthy, living a drug-free, healthy lifestyle. So our students enjoyed that because our sixth graders, it's so funny when they come across, you know, Halloween being the first big holiday, that they usually have parties in the elementary, so they're like, are we gonna have a party? Like, well, we're not gonna have a party on Halloween, but we're gonna have a drug-free rally. And you know, sometimes that's kind of like, oh. Well afterwards, one of the sixth graders, I said, well, what did you think? And they were like, we loved it! So it's always a good event and nice thing for our kids to get out to do, but also nice that our kids actually host it and do the work. We actually also held our National Honor Society induction and we inducted fifteen new members to that society. So that's really great, 'cause that goes one-hundred percent off of their grades. So glad to have fifteen members who were eligible and taking on the role. We have Trinity Gardner, she's with the Texas Children Advocates Center. She came out and spoke with our students about healthy relationships and bullying and how to, how to be a good friend. Our Ag, if you follow our Ag program on social media, you can see they have been very busy here lately. They actually created, and I'm not sure exactly when the City of Maude's gonna put it up, but the nativity scene that you'll see right up there in the City of Maude, our Ag department created that. And if you would like, they are actually selling them and they now have three sizes of that nativity scene. So that's a great work for our, our students to get involved with, with our city. We have some Hatch chicks. They also created metal Christmas trees and those are, they're about this tall and they paint them green and they have the yellow star on top. They're really very neat. So hopefully you guys, somebody will get one to, to take home with. And then of course, they do what Mr. Baron does best. They hosted a chili cheese Friday and that's always a great thing, you know, on secondary campus. Mr. Baron also took four of our ladies to the Made for Excellence Conference. It's a leadership conference at A&amp;M Commerce. And so they did a really good job there and learned some things. All of our juniors in October took ASVAB. And then we also hosted an ACT School Day for our seniors. So really busy with that. We've also had several recruiters on campus. We've had TC out twice this past month. We had the United Welding Institute. We had SFA, A&amp;M Texarkana, Air Force and the University of Arkansas, Rich Mountain. They've all been on campus visiting with our students. So a lot of opportunities for our students to see and hear from different opportunities for post-secondary colleges and workforce and, and military. So that's really good thing that we like to do here. We also had hype and glory wrestler, Stephen Remsen. He came out and visited with our sixth graders and he talked to them about bullying, but also working hard to achieve your dreams. And so the sixth graders, I don't know if you saw the pictures, but they got to take pictures with his championship belt and they loved it. So that was a really good activity for them. And then this week, we've been, our staff tried to do something fun, you know, the week before Thanksgiving and everything, clearly we need a break, obviously I do. I hope it's everybody and Ms. Blackburn tonight. But we hosted an Underground Spirit Week and I'll tell you, you know, when you get to secondary, you often think, they don't probably pay attention and stuff. But Josh, you'll really appreciate this. The first day, we, we said we're doing patterns. So we had some people wear florals and stripes and polka dots, but most of us wore plaid. And Jackson actually walked around the corner and he's like, you got on plaid too! And I was like, yeah, it's cold, I got my jacket on. And he's like, no, something's going on, Coach Bush is wearing plaid. So he even noticed it and called it out and everything. But we had an all-black day with Johnny Cash. We had our, our denim on denim day today. And then tomorrow, we're gonna finish off and I think they'll really like tomorrow because it's dressed like the students' day. So we'll see if they get a kick out of that. But it's been fun for our staff, just something lighthearted. And, and we haven't told the students, they know, they've caught on to us, but we haven't told the students. So it's been fun playing and tricking them and everything. And then you can see there, we've got a busy, busy month in December. We've got our UIL and our middle school is also gonna participate in the mobile dairy presentation. And so lots of things going on. Semester tests will be coming up, so it'll be, those last three weeks will be, they'll be full. But that's all I have tonight. You guys have any questions or anything? All right, well, if I don't talk to you beforehand, I hope you all have a happy Thanksgiving.
Next item in gender is a, consider and approve the MOU between Bowie County and Maude ISD for law enforcement cooperation.
Hey, Board, this is a, just a MOU that really lines out the jurisdiction and responsibilities of Maude ISD PD alongside the Bowie County Sheriff's PD. And so what this does is it puts us as the primary person in control of anything that happens at Maude ISD, which is what we want. But in the event that Joe's not here or if it's off time with the year, that Bowie County Sheriff is the one that is the primary person that, that comes in and works with that. There's, there's been times, because there's not a whole lot of sheriff participation in this, you know, in this area, you know, we're limited in numbers. You know, sometimes they'll call Joe if it's something close and ask him to, to be a part of it. So just a way of working side by side, backing each other up, just being able to support each other. But putting it out there for our board of directors to approve, potentially approve it and solidify that relationship as two inter-local police jurisdictions within our county.
Any discussion or questions? Joe, a motion to approve the MOU between Bowie County and Maude ISD for law enforcement cooperation?
I'll make a motion.
Motion material, give a second. Can I think about Tim? All in favor, raise your hand. It is unanimous. Consider and approve Tent Master Plus to install three M security film in district facilities.
Board, this is a, a quote to finalize the safety film that's on our windows throughout our district. So in the first grant that came out, we got the front side of the buildings, everything that was on the outside of the fence for the most part. But this is our second safety grant that's coming from the state. It, it allows us to, because of the, the work that's already been done with the fencing and the security cameras and all those pieces, we can solidify and harden all of our exterior windows throughout the district for each building, throughout the district. So that, that's, to me, is, is remarkable. That's way above anything that TEA asks or requests of schools. Because inside of our perimeter, that, those pieces actually don't have to be completed. But what this does, it puts any of our, our casing that, going into our elementary, we're Buffy and Brandy Art, all that would be bullet resistant. Any of our windows outside would be bullet resistant as well. So that's, puts us in a really good spot. And I've watched the, the films on the, how this stuff works, you know, it, it's remarkable and abuse that this window film can take from a, from a AR-15, you know what I'm saying? Protecting, potentially protect our kids. And the whole point of it is to, it's not, there's never a one-stop shop that stops it all, but it's just layers upon layers upon layers. And so what this does, it potentially buys time in the event that we have, even if it happens in Maude. And so it also works well for tornadoes, stuff like that. So anytime there would be flying glasses, you know, fine as well, which potentially where you're in that alley, you know, it would help to eliminate that throughout the district. Now, it doesn't go all the way like the top piece up there on that, that back door, but everything that would be, you know, door height and down would be, would be taken care of. This is out of the, the safe grant cycle two, which is put out by TEA. And so we did have a hundred and fifty thousand dollar allotment on state on that. Every bit of this would be brought out of grant funds to take care of this as well.
Do you, Board Mayor, any questions or discussion?
Did they say what the lifespan of it is? Just, I mean, curiosity. It's supposed to go for?
It's supposed to go twenty-one, thirty.
As long as the building. From my recollection, it was basically lockup.
The caulk background and everything in it, once it's putty and it's, as long as the, the caulk residual backing is in there, it's, it's there. And so that's what holds it. It's, it's like a half-inch wide bead that they run in there. So it's a pretty substantial amount of material that holds it against that window.
Any others? We have a motion to approve the Tent Master Plus proposal.
I'll make that motion.
A motion by Josh, give a second.
Second.
Second to RJ, all in favor? Protection of valuable assets. Consider and approve updated HB3 goals and MISD strategic planning documents.
Okay, Board, the next one, this is a piece that we started last year as a board with our strategic planning documents. And our House Bill Three goals, I'm gonna take just a minute to, excuse me, bounce back through these, for our mission statement. We were, wanted to create responsible democratic lifelong learners. Our mission statement, MISD strives to prepare our students to be productive members of society, of society in an ever-changing environment. So those are really the two pieces that, why we come to school. And we come to school to create those, those type of learners. We do that through English One, algebra, first grade math, you know, all those pieces are built to that, that cumulative person that's gonna graduate from our school. We had five goals as a board as well, and I'm gonna bounce to those. Goal one was instill community values while providing excellent educational experiences that enable our students to thrive after graduation. Underneath that, we hounded our House Bill Three goals, which was part of the eighty, maybe the eighty-sixth legislature, it goes back quite ways. And then in this one here, we updated it to reflect the new mandates up through 2029 or even into 2037, I think is what it is. I've got a typo on that piece there. But the, the change in House Bill Three was changing the meets on star reading in third grade from fifty-eight to seventy-four by June 2029. And then just in case you wondered before, what was the one before, who was increasing from forty-eight percent to fifty-two percent? So you can see that's continuing to grow. Third grade students in math, again, meets grade level from fifty-eight to seventy-eight percent by June 2029. The prior one, which was our goal from before, was forty-two to forty-six. So again, it's, it's continuing to grow and ratchet it up. And each year, you know, as, as each House Bill's cycle comes through, the state pushes that number higher and higher and higher. And then our last one here was graduates completing, meeting criteria, specific and marked completers will increase from eighty-three percent to ninety-three percent. Our old one was ninety-five to ninety-six percent, but as we've said in the last board meeting, and Ms. Harold talked in just a minute, that's a new calibrated criteria. And so it's, again, it's, it's moving more and more kids to that college level even faster, you know, by the time they graduate high school. Our next goal was to recruit, retain, retain quality staff. So our goal was to hire and retain quality staff members who share Maude community values. Our next goal was operational excellence, provide multiple opportunities for student engagement in curriculum and extracurricular programs to produce fruitful, active and democratic citizens. Our next goal was safety, lead the area in providing a safe and secure learning environment. And finally, quality facilities and finance, provide quality district facilities and educational experiences while being physically responsible. And those are the pieces, the stretch pieces that we set up last year. So I just wanted to review those with you and build in the newer House Bill Three goals that are coming out of the last legislative session forward. Recommend those to the board for approval.
Any board member have any questions or any discussion on the updated HB3 goals and MISD strategic planning? Do you have a motion to approve as presumed? A motion material, give a second. Second by Tim, all in favor, raise your hand. Item eleven, consider and approve Maude ISD campus academic goals twenty-four, twenty-five.
So continuing with those goals that we, trying to make sure we keep across the board. We did a presentation last month on the campus academic goals. We did have one meeting with Julia Roberts, Robertson from? Sorry, that wasn't supposed to get out. Julia Robinson from Region Eight, who is just phenomenal with accountability and all those pieces there that, that work on the campus. And so I've asked most principals to come back tonight and present their final academic goals for the year. And the, the purpose of these academic goals and what they did, they've actually got a calculator in the computer that, that if they hit their numbers that are in this sheet, we expect to be in A campus. And so that's, that's the whole point there. You know, we're not, we're not trying to come in and say, we want, we hope to be in A campus, we want to be in A campus. These are the, these are the strategies that they're implementing day in, day out, so that when accountability comes out next summer, Maude's in A campus, you know what I'm saying? So they're, they're taking those, those type of steps, even down to the layer of, all right, maybe Coach Blackburn needs to work a little harder in, in a subject, so we're pulling Coach back in to, to work harder in that class there, you know? So they're, they're really drilling down to kid level there for each grade level across the board. And that's happening from pre-K all the way through, I really wanna say ACT, because that's, that's really what they're doing. And so that's, that's all the way through. So Ms. Harold, if you'll come up and just quickly run over your secondary goals.
All right, so if you'll notice here, goal number one, one-hundred percent of our seniors will graduate high school within four years of entering ninth grade. And so what we do to assess that is we look at our star assessment, like Dr. Seager said, we look at TSI, we look at ACT, we look at a lot of factors. In order to do that though, we have to start with the five-star, which is the biology, algebra one, English one, English two, and US history. Because you have to have those five-star scores and passing standards to be able to meet graduation standards. So we'll look there, obviously our October interim, what it did, it didn't give us data as far as numbers, but it did give us data as far as where our students are and where they're projected to be if they took the test now. And it gave us standards as far as what do we need to do as far as targeting for our tutoring. So we utilize that, we've sat down with our PLC meeting, in our PLC meetings, and we've talked as teams, what are we going to do moving forward? And we've adjusted our tutoring, we've also adjusted Michelle's schedule as far as who she's pulling out and who she's giving more intervention to. So our middle school has thirty minutes during their high school lunch, they have tutoring, and our high school has thirty minutes during middle school lunch. And so that's what we do with our tutoring right now. And that's where we provide more extra help for our students to be able to reach that goal. If you'll notice there, of sixty-four in English One, sixty-nine in English Two, sixty-three in Algebra One, fifty-eight in Biology, and then sixty-two in US History. And when we take our benchmark, our February interim, if we feel like if we're at fifty-five percent across the board and we have fifty-five percent passing standard, then we feel like we will meet those goals when we take that test. And some of them are a little bit before May, we feel like we will meet those goals. So our teachers have already started now with their target tutoring and then we will readjust after we take our benchmarks with even more specific tutoring. You'll notice there, Houseville, or excuse me, our goal really goes off of our CCMR and that's our indicator that drives a lot of our CCMR outcome bonus and things that we see for accountability. So this is something even as a counselor that I was very in tune with as our students work through high school. And so you'll notice there in ninth and tenth grade, you'll see zero percent. And that's not that those students are not on track, they are on track. They starting their program and study their freshman year. And all of the freshmen through juniors, they will be completers. And so what it does, like I And so what it does, like I said last time, is it, it makes you intentional when you're building the schedule, and you have to look at what students have taken, and then what's the next class in that program of study. So you go back to their principal's classes freshman year, but they won't take certification exams freshman year, so that's why you see zeros there in ninth and tenth grade. But they will start taking certification exams, and some of them can have the four credits by their junior year, especially our students that are in our ag program and they are enrolled in our dual credit ag, because they would have four credits by their junior year. So that's why you see our numbers start to increase to where we hopefully will meet our goal of seventy-five percent by senior year. Now, our seniors are a little bit different because they are concentrators, so their standards are just a little bit different than our underclassmen, but that's been our goal the whole time. When we found out about C C M R, we really focused on how can we get a certification? And then how can we make intentional with our schedule of what kids are taking instead of, you've got fourth period open, what's available now, it's you've got fourth period open and you need an ag class, let's go down to ag. So that's what we do with, um, with the C C M R piece. Our goal number three, sixty percent of our students will meet the college readiness standards in, as A C T, S A T, or T S I assessment. Um, and you'll notice there when we start, our goal is, um, sixty percent, but in ninth grade, obviously, our students haven't started taking the T S I or A C T at that point, um, until the end of the year. And since we've started bumping down our dual credit classes, we actually have ninth graders taking dual credit classes this year, but they're non-restricted classes, so they don't have to have to have, they do not have to have the T S I test before they take the learning frameworks and the music appreciation. Now, when they move up to their sophomore, or yeah, their sophomore year, they do. So what we do is we start giving that T S I test second semester of freshman year, so that's why you see our numbers start going up there. And then as we go across sophomore, junior, senior year, we get across to that sixty percent. The greatest thing about the A C T and the T S I, a lot of kids, I'll be honest with you, don't take S A T in this area. But what we've done is we can now offer and we can administer the T S I and the A C T on campus, which really helps our students, because in previous years, our students would have to go to T C to take the T S I, and they would have to go and take it in their testing center. And then on A C T, you know, you'd have to get up on Saturday and go to the nearest place to be able to take it. But now we offer two A C T full-day administrations, so every grade level has the opportunity to take it twice, and we pay for that for them. But then we also can administer the T S I, and we offer that multiple times throughout the year. We're going to have our first administration here when we get back from Thanksgiving break. Um, and so that's to give our students ample opportunity to meet those readiness standards. So if they want to go to trade school, they want to go to college, university, whatever it is, they hopefully won't have to take remediation classes. They'll be able to go in and take the classes that they need for their degree plan and finish in the time and manner of their degree program. And then goal four goes down and really focuses on our middle school, um, that ninety-five percent of our eighth graders will enter high school prepared to graduate within the four years. And so we really have to look at their eighth grade star test, um, to receive that data. So of course, the English, math, the science, and social studies. And you'll notice there in English, our, um, goal is sixty-five percent, math's fifty-nine, science sixty-two, and U S history is fifty-three. And we do have some growth in all of those areas that we've got to do, but our teachers know that. Um, and like I said, the October interim, it didn't give us numbers, but it gave us data, data that our teachers are already using and implementing within their classroom, and then also, as I said earlier, in their tutoring times. So we've really got to push hard in eighth grade. Um, it's a hard year of testing with four tests, it's the first time they've seen a science test since fifth grade, and it's the first time ever they've seen a social studies test. So it's a big adjustment for eighth graders, but our thing is to get them prepared. And like Dr. Seeger said, we don't just start getting them ready for that eighth grade science test in eighth grade. Coach Blackburn starts in sixth grade, and then Mr. Tomberling gets them seventh grade and eighth grade. And we also have a science star class that our biology teacher, Ms. Liam, actually helped. So just to provide them ample opportunity to receive the instruction they need to be successful, because we do know those tests are difficult. And then to support that goal, um, we came up with two progress measures. You'll notice the first one there, um, is really focused on our seventh graders. And to support that ninety-five percent of eighth graders, we have our seventh graders, uh, our target of sixty-five percent passing standard in English and fifty-nine percent in math. And so we really started working and focusing with our, um, seventh graders. And I'll tell you, our seventh graders and sixth graders did really well. So there's a lot of high standards for that group, um, they did really well last year on star. So Mr. Chambers has been really, working really hard, as well as Ms. Fathergill with that group again, to get them prepared for these, uh, these standards that we have set for them. And then going on down to our sixth graders, because you, you see across the state, that's the area that you see the biggest trouble is from fifth to sixth grade, and it's adjustment, um, once they, especially like our campus, when they come over to middle school, it's an adjustment. And so to support, though, our, uh, ninety-five percent of our eighth grade, we want sixty-five percent of our sixth graders passing English, um, their English test, and then sixty-one passing their math test. And, um, I'll tell you, Ms., Ms., uh, Fathergill and, and Mr. Chambers, they worked really hard with our sixth grade. Um, and to support seventh and sixth grade, I'll tell you, seventh grade has two classes for math and two classes, two class periods for English. And sixth grade, we do a split, so they have one and a half and one and a half in each of those as well because of that adjustment coming from fifth grade to sixth grade. But our teachers work really hard, um, they utilize the tutoring, they utilize the extra time I've had with those students to really reinforce those skills that they need to be successful. And then we're also doing something different, like with Coach Miller this year, trying to help with cross-curricular, he goes over a lot of vocabulary, um, and things to help our students. So if they see a question on an English test, they won't get hung up because they don't know what the word means. So he's really, uh, working on that, and he has social studies classes as well to support that English test. So that's kind of our goals on the secondary side of campus. Do you guys need me to, um-
Start over.
Start over. Clarify?
So, help me understand, a goal of sixty-one percent passes, what does that mean? Does that mean thirty-nine percent fail?
Yeah.
Okay. But that's sixty-nine percent met standard.
Yes.
So the school actually gets credit for approaches?
Yes.
So that's considered passing by the state? Well, we're taking it to that next layer, which is we want them ready, grade level.
You want, you want them for, you want them to get to the meet standard, and you want growth. Those are the two big things that you want when you're looking at a star test, is meets and growth. Because we need our students to grow too, because you get, you know, that's, that's a big thing for our students as well. You know, even a student who's at meets, that student still needs to grow. So that's, that's two big progress measures that you look at on star.
So even if that goal, it's, it's above and beyond the requirement?
It is, it is. And that doesn't mean, like Dr. Seeger said, some of the students will still be at approach to everything, which would still be passing.
Thank you.
And so, and as the state has ratcheted up, those are really commensurate with the, the levels that the state's showing for an A, basically, you know what I'm saying? And so those all plug into that, that ultimate number. And so, um, and they are different, you know, it's not like a seventy across the board, it's, it's different levels because of the different type of test, depending on which grade level, and, you know, it, it really is, there's a lot of variables. And they have, there's a table that they work off of, and you plug all that into it, and it comes out with a spit that degree.
There's another thing, I could quote my mind, if there's ten questions and you get three of them right, you passed it.
Yeah, that's right.
Like that don't was thirty percent you didn't know, then you did.
And that's kind of how our interim, the highway base thought of, yeah, yeah.
That's a crazy formula that they always have.
It is, that's right.
Anybody?
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Seeger.
I got one more question. I ain't gonna leave that. Uh, now, you gonna be able to come back in, in March and update these numbers, of course?
Yes, yes, sir, we will, because we will have taken our benchmarks by then. So you will have, you will have real numbers then.
Which way we're going.
Yes, sir, we will know which way we're going then. Yes, sir. Anything else? Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Ms. Seeger, if you'll present us on the elementary goals.
So the elementary seems easier than high school, we do not have a whole bit, we don't have the same data that, um, she has to be accountable for. So looking at our goals, our goal one is seventy percent of mod elementary students will meet the interim growth target on the star reading readiness assessment. Um, right now, if you'll look, last year, we had thirty-two percent of our, it would have been fourth graders, meet grade level. Well, this year, they're in fifth grade. So this year, we want fifty-five percent is what we need to meet grade level, to make our growth, growth, yes. So we've looked at all the data from last year, and you'll see in each, like, fourth grade reading, last year, there was, they were at fifty-eight percent. Well, this year, we're going to need seventy percent to meet, to meet our growth point.
Looks like they're doing good there.
Uh-huh, they are, they're trending. We are doing really good, working really hard down there. Um, and then you go to the next page, our third graders, well, they did not take a test, uh, there's not a test to compare them to at the, um-
Second.
Yeah. So we need seventy percent of them to pass, to meet, meet our growth point. And right now, in the October interim, we had sixty-three percent there at the meets level. So that's really good for third grade. These are babies that have never taken a test before, and to put them on the computer and have them take the test and then have the skills.
And they took that on the computer.
And they took it on, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Big.
That is huge.
Change.
So in what we're doing now, just to, just to put a little, um, sidebar, second grade is now going to start testing on the computer. They do unit tests, and their unit test will be on the computer. And we will also even take it one step down to first grade, first grade will start taking tests on the computer. Now, their tests will be a little bit easier, they'll be yes, no questions, but it's getting them used to using the computer to input their answers.
Is keyboard, mouse, or is it like a touchscreen?
Uh, no, it's keyboard, mouse. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Aggressive.
Okay, and then you see six, uh, second grade, right now, looking, using our M class data, this is our data right now, forty-eight percent are, um, on grade level. So we need eighty-five percent to be on grade level at the end of the year. And that's allotting for eighty-five percent, not a hundred, is allotting for our special needs students, our students, um, that would not.
One thing, let me throw in there too, part of your, you see the numbers that are at the elementary level are higher typically than they are at the secondary. And the reason for it, we want to make sure that we're not losing kids when they start, you know what I'm saying? So we want to, as they're coming out of elementary, we want to make sure we have most of those kids on grade level, so that when they get to the secondary, they're not trying to move mountains, you know what I'm saying? They're, they're just putting, continuing that flow. And so, so the whole point is really focusing on, we're bringing our babies, and we're bringing them all along, and we're not letting them fall out before they get up at higher school. Because once they, once they start falling, it's almost impossible to get them back.
Yes. And so the way, look at the next page, first grade, first grade right now is trending at sixty-one percent. And they took this test in October, so that's letting you know their kindergarten teachers did a great job getting them ready. Um, and then we look at the kindergarten, they're at fifty-two percent right now being assessed. And we want them at eighty-five also at the end. And then our pre-K, they take a test called the circle, and at the beginning, we actually had seven kids who were on grade level. So they, those are our kids that pick up really well, and those are your kids, you know, that can almost teach themselves. But by the end of the year, we want twenty out of the twenty-one, because we know, we're always allowing that one in case there's, you know, a special needs child. And that's where we are for reading. And we'll go to our second goal, which is math. For fifth grade, our goal is fifty percent of the kids to be at meets grade level. And right now, our October interim is forty-four percent. That's great, because those kiddos last year were only at thirteen percent, or percent in fourth grade.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
On the, back to reading.
Yes.
When do we start, don't we start in pre-K as far as testing for dyslexia or anything?
First grade.
First grade.
Yes, sir. And we do have high numbers.
That's what I was thinking.
We have very high numbers for dyslexia.
Okay. I'm thinking of a general number or something.
You can see, you start seeing trends earlier, but we don't, the state doesn't really require it until first, um, M class, in kindergarten, we do the M class, and it'll show some-
Yeah. Sorry.
No, you're good, you're good. But we do have, we do have high, low, um, dyslexia, yeah. Okay, so then we go back to, um, fourth grade math. So you see, um, the prior year, those were your third graders, they were at seventy-five percent. Right now, they are thirty-six percent at meets level. And our kiddos, we have them in intervention groups. After they took this test, the teacher went back to look to see, you know, where the discrepancies, um, and where she needed to go back and reteach. And so that's what she's been working on to sew up those deficits. And then we go to our third grade math. We need them, our goal is eighty percent of all students, and right now, it's fifty percent in the October interim. So I feel like we will be able to get to the eighty percent, the way they're trending. And then we go down to second grade, and so I did not have data from last year's star math assessment, so we're just starting with our math from this year. And second grade and October, they were at forty-one percent on grade level. So I, I see those trending up very easily, too. First grade, we want ninety percent of our students on grade level. Again, no data from last year's star math, so we're starting with our October interim, which was thirty-six percent. We set that standard high, the same as we do in the reading, because we need those kids, whenever they leave first grade, with those foundational skills to be ready. And then the same thing, um, kindergarten, our goal is ninety percent, and that, they were at fifty-two percent in October. And then our circle, our pre-K math, we had three out of twenty-one students who were on grade level in October. So lots of area for growth there. And I, I expect in our, she's actually getting ready to test them in December, um, for a benchmark, and I expect to see lots of improvements there. She has some kids right now that are reading, so that's great. And if you, if you follow the, um, Facebook, we put the kids on there every time they make big gains. So what we've done in reading and math with grades three through five, every time they take a unit test, they look at their data, and then we decide which kids we need around that need to be remediated from the test that they just took, the unit test, because all of those tests build toward the end of the star test. And they, um, pull them during their win time, which they have forty-five minutes of intervention. And then whenever we come back from Christmas break, we're going to start our after-school tutorials for students who need that. And then our grades pre-K through second, they are pulling their kids already based on their unit test and their data, um, in the classrooms since the beginning of school. So they're, they're working with the kids, and their groups are fluid. So depending on what this child is low in this day, he may not necessarily come back to the table the next day, because he might be higher on the concept that she's working on that day. Any questions?
Good or obvious?
Well, she's gonna answer the same question.
Thank you, Ms. Seeger.
Just Kayla got the doctor, go first.
That's all right.
The whole point of, of bringing all this to you over the last couple of months, we want to make sure we're very strategic in how we're doing it. But we're, we're looking at it all year long, and we're bringing those reports back to you, because, you know, we want it to be as clear-cut from beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year, we should be right on target. So that's what we're, we're wanting to do. And so, uh, and, and the whole conception of this is, you know, we're aligning our goals from the board all the way down to the, you know, the pre-K, which is all the way down in that continuum, so that we have the same set of goals all the way through the, the system. And that's how we're going to look at them, how we're going to measure them, how we're going to track them. And so if we, if we end up at a spot where we, we don't have the growth we want, then that tells us, it doesn't tell us something's necessarily horrible, it just says, hey, we gotta focus on something, you know what I'm saying? Something's not right here. And that lets us know early on so that we can make corrections so that we take care of our kids. And that's, that's the whole point of that. So it's using a, a old superintendent that says, you're not using a hammer to, to look at things, you're using a flashlight. So you can shine lights on it and you can fix things while they're, before they become a problem. And so that you keep the whole system moving upward and training in the right direction.
Love good plan. A goal without a plan is just a wish. So we need to, uh, approve the MOD ISD campus academic goals. Anybody have any other questions or comments before we move on? We have a motion to approve the campus academic goals.
I'm like a motion.
Motion by Terry, what I say?
I'd say.
Thinking about Josh, all in favor?
Yeah.
And, and then, all right, superintendent's report.
All right, Mort. This was, uh, one I'm excited to present with you tonight is the DVA, which is, it should be in your, behind that last piece. It's a TBA document. Last time I pulled it out of the wallet. But the DVA, which is the district vulnerability assessment, uh, the last piece of our vulnerability assessment is the presentation to the board. So you don't have to take action on this tonight, but I do, I have to present the data to you and let you know basically the findings of this report. We can make this really easy, cause there are no findings in this report right here, which I was, was very exciting, uh, for our district. Uh, but I do wanna point out a few things in here, um, that was highlighted in this. They go through all these different pieces here. Overall best practices though, this is one I really wanna look at for our, for our district. We've worked with identification of doors and how they work to make sure our guardian teams are able to access rooms ea- easily and efficiently. We require train, monthly training for our guardians. Uh, we've equipped classrooms with lockdown curtain to cover the windows for visibility. Uh, also in that, in that, uh, Tent Master film that y'all just approved, the windows inside the classroom doors will also have tieners as well. So that, that they'll be bullet resistant as well, so in the bathroom doors. We have a go backpack in each classroom. Uh, and when the auditor from TEA was meeting with Nurse Nisi. Uh, he, he was taking, he was working with her, you know, making notes and stuff. And he said, I stopped making notes and started taking notes. He said, because the things that she had in place was just phenomenal for her district. He said, he said, I haven't seen another school system to date that can compete with what Nurse Nisi's put together. We have, uh, equipment at most facilities, uh, excuse me, we have equipped entrances with, uh, opioid, opioid resistance. Thank you, sir. Which is basically, um, fentanyl. If someone has fentanyl in their system, we can react, counteract those problems. We have EpiPens. We have, uh, multiple defibrillators around the district, actually more than most places have. We got a big accolade for having that in the egg shop as well, along with our, our go bags. What's the word for our, uh, first aid kits that are out there? We had, uh, of course our perimeter fixes were all numbered. Um, one of the things that he thought was funny. Was I went in the egg shop, of course, you know, the egg shop, you never know what's gonna happen out there. And, uh, one of the kids said, hey, where's his ID? Cause she was just being a kid. But he said, that don't happen everywhere. He said, so if your kids are programmed to look for IDs, someone give you credit for that. So. And then all of our, all of our employees have had, uh, first aid for heart attack, uh, CPR, and, and success, you know, just taking care of people there. And so, uh, I told, I told everyone last year when they were kinda moment of growing, I said, you know, you're more likely to do it on me than probably anybody else. And I wanna make sure one of you can, can get me to the hospital. So. Anyway, uh, as far as corrective actions, there are no corrective actions to take. The only action to take is to turn in, uh, that this was reported to the board tonight. I mean, I do wanna take this a second, let you see all the different pieces that were evaluated. So, uh, the next twenty-eight, twenty pages is all documentation that was built in, brought to the front. And this is not something that happened in the last month, it happened over the last several years. So the things that y'all been working on for years in MOD, uh, is what allowed us to be, uh, so successful in this. But you can see where we, it shows that we passed each indicator. And you, you will, you will not see one failure in there. The only time you, you'll see something is an NA, that's where it's not, not applicable to our district. And so, um, a piece that he also was really excited about, it wasn't on the site at the time, but talking about the privacy fence going on with the elementary. That was another big piece as well, just being able to separate, you know, our playground from, uh, from things that we don't control. So that was another piece that was big. All in all, uh, exhaustive report. But, uh, staff did a phenomenal job in working together, uh, to, to present MOD in a light that was very favorable, uh, to the state of Texas. Uh, I do wanna highlight Buffy as well. Of all of our secretaries that got interviewed, poor Buffy got grilled. And she was a trooper over there, probably about a twenty, twenty-five minute presentation with her, just, just Buffy. And, well, she was like, I'll do this, I'll do this. You know, she was just, she was seamless. And so, uh, she did, she did a phenomenal job, uh, working with, with our auditor. And so, uh... Another big piece is also our, our door audits. And so that we do those, um, weekly as well, we present those. And, uh, we have a system in place for, uh, taking care of those if there's ever something that comes up that's not up to speed at the time. So, uh, again, all in all, a very good report. If you have trouble sleeping, just start reading it and it'll, it'll help you, um, go to bed real easy. So. Any questions on this, Mort?
Great.
So I was very excited about that one right there. Very, yeah. I tell you what, it, it is way beyond the old school safety one, you know what I'm saying? Uh, as a matter of fact, we're supposed to do a school safety one this year too, but I haven't heard anyone say anything to me about coming out. So who knows if, they made a safe one, they just got a perfect score. So. Next thing, other things that we're all working on, I'd let it be here, was working with, uh, Sims in Redwater. And I've talked to the superintendent of Redwater and superintendent, uh, James Bowie, uh, for inter-local MOU for support for transportation. And that's been a concern of ours in the event that we have to have an evacuation, how do we get all our kids out of here? Can I pile them on there? Probably can. You know, it's not necessarily the best way in the world to have all the high school kids piled in so tight that they can't breathe. But if something happened, I could move them, you know what I'm saying? But what this does is, is a guarantee and support between our, between us, uh, for X number of buses. You know, I don't know how many they could, they could dedicate to us, but buses and drivers to move our kids. And to carry our kids wherever they stay with them until we don't already got support. And so both are open to doing that. Uh, they're both open to also being interlocals with our police support as well. Because, you know, we're ten miles apart and it's, there's very likely that our, our people would be the first one on scene. That if one of our sister campuses as well had that, had something come up. So those things that we're working on, they just haven't gotten all the way through to, the, the wordsmithing yet to, to bring back to the board. So I do anticipate bringing that to y'all, hopefully in December, uh, for recommendations to solidify that relationship there. We're also looking at reunification centers, uh, in Atlanta, New Boston, and, uh, Lenin Killdeer. So those are all pieces that we're trying to, and, uh, a little church out there on twenty-six, twenty-four. And so those are all pieces that, uh, centers that we can solidify and have a MOU with them for using facilities. So.
In the event, we gotta get them all.
Correct. Again, the last thing we wanna do is take kids out of here, I'll be honest with you. Cause we are set up to get kids home, you know what I'm saying? If you ever, if you ever just wanna see a machine operate, just watch class, just, just watch it dismissal at the end of the day. They're flawless, you know? So I don't wanna take that anywhere else. But in the event that trains cause something to happen, we have, you know, a weather event that I can't use this facility. I need to be able to take kids somewhere else and then reunite them with their families. And so that's just putting a hard plan in place with, uh, written documentation that, hey, we will support each other. So that's coming, that's coming soon. Cafeteria project, I'm gonna read what Robert sent me. So, uh, as you knew, this month wasn't gonna be a whole lot for the cafeteria. Uh, we do expect to have a whole rollout in December for the board meeting. Looking at the updated number for the cafeteria and a, a recommendation. And so, um... Sorry, my phone flipped on me. I thought I had it ready. Robert sent back, uh, uh, they sent out two-hundred-and-thirteen bid invitations and advertised in, uh, newspaper for the next three weeks. It also went out with Construction Connect, which is a, um, internet posting as well for job orders. And so we, we should get considerable more visibility. And so, and that was one of the things that was a problem in the first couple passes. Was there just wasn't a whole lot of competition. And so, as a matter of fact, a couple of them was just one person in there. And so that, we weren't getting very good numbers. So, uh, but we are, I should have updated numbers, um, by the thirteenth. And by our December board meeting, we'll be able to present some information to you. That'll get us in the, hopefully the right direction for the cafeteria project. So, um, Robert feels pretty comfortable about that. Again, the opportunities is out there. So we'll, we'll see where it falls. Next thing is teacher incentive allotment. And it's, again, it's not an action item, this one's slightly, sir. And so we're beginning this work right here. And so I know Dr. Bradshaw talked a little bit about this at one point. Kinda got table with the teachers and there was some, some probably not a good understanding, cause it was new from the state. Uh, so like all things that come out of TEA, you know, they want you to jump and hit the ground running, but they hadn't figured out how to build an airplane yet. And so this is something now that has been built pretty well. Uh, we, we actually partnered with Region Nine and Fifteen. I think Fifteen is the one that we're working with, right? And so, uh, I'm walking us through this model. And the teacher incentive allotment is a means for increasing teacher salaries based on student performance. That's, that's really the premise behind it. And so, um, it's a, really a, a four-year process. Right now, we're in pre-application, so we're in year zero or one, what they're, what they're saying. Uh, we're building it all this year. Uh, we'll have meetings with teachers before Christmas to talk about this piece with them. Uh, one of the big things that was a, um, a misconception the last time was it, people didn't realize that it's actually available to each teacher. So, uh, the plan that we'll be writing is gonna be a multi-tiered plan, so it won't be all-in-one. We look at starting with a set of teachers to begin with, uh, that we can measure and get approved, because we have to go through Texas Tech as far as the data validation. If we mess up anywhere in there, we're dead in the water. And so we wanna make sure we get it in. And then the next year, we'll build in the next set of teachers into it and possibly the next set after that. So the goal is though, and every teacher on our campus will have an opportunity to be eligible for TIA and not, not exclude anybody through that process. Now, again, it's a, it's a huge process. It's intense. And so it's not, it's, the, the thing that TEA said when they rolled it out was, not everyone's gonna be able to get it. Cause there's just so much in there. Some's gonna say, this is not working. But for the teachers that are, you know, we have some master teachers that are already working and doing a great job. You know, for MOD ISD, um, that, that teacher could earn an additional twenty-four thousand a year. Based on our, based on our economically disadvantaged debt. And so anywhere between six thousand and twenty, twenty-four thousand a year, it's a huge swing. It's, it changes lives, you know what I'm saying? And so, uh, it puts, puts our teachers in a better spot. And so, this just kinda shows how it's going for the state. You can see how it started back in nineteen-twenty, not a whole lot, but twenty-three, twenty-four, it's jumped considerably as far as the money that's going through TIA. The big things that we'll be working for through and, and coming back is which groups are we talking about? How do we designate them? And how? There's multiple pieces of this as well. It's not just, uh, you know, if I'm a third grade teacher and my, my kids hit the numbers for TIA. Well, what are the supports that happened before third grade that allowed that to happen? You see what I'm saying? So, or if I'm a special ed teacher and I'm really supporting this general ed teacher, you know, how do we make sure that we do hurry as well? Or an A that's doing a great job as well. So it's looking at all those different perspectives there. And that's, that's really where we are right now. It's how do we plan for that and design it so that that can be successful? Uh, so that's what we said. TIA is really determined by the teacher observation. So whatever T-test score a teacher scores, which is their, their appraisal that happens each year. Uh, their student growth, how much their kids grow. So the things that Ms. Seager's and Ms. Harold were just talking to you about student growth, student growth, student growth. Those are all things that line up with this piece as well. So that, you know, they're designed so that would, if you have great student growth, I promise you, you got great teaching. So that those things start to line up so that the distinction for TIA is a double ringer. And that's, that's the whole thing that we're trying to accomplish. Again, so just showing the, the growth here piece for it. And I took a, I just took a, I'll be honest with you, I took someone else's presentation and watered it way down for you. So the instruction domain, uh, which is two-point-one in T-test and the learning environment is three-point-one in T-test. Those are clearly the two evidence pieces that, that we're looking for as far as, uh, teacher incentive allotment. And so, um, you can see that the distinctions here as far as recognized exemplary and master as far as teacher observations. How much do they have to get to fall in those ranges? Uh, recognized teacher's getting seventy-four percent of the possible points. Exemplary seventy-eight and a master teacher is at ninety percent. So again, huge numbers there as far as looking at their T-test scores. So we're right now in the twenty-four, twenty-five year. This is the piece that, next year would be our data collection year. So we would run the process, the principals would do their T-test evaluations, and then we would get the scores back in the summer. That data would then in twenty-six be sent up to TEA for data validation. And then the next year, that is the payout to teachers. So this is a lengthy process. But once it's set up, it's in place and the system's running, uh, for years down the road. And that's, that's what we're trying to get to. Any question on this one right here? This is the part that's really kind of the hard pill to swallow, because you're doing a lot of work these two years right here. And you don't see anything for another year.
It's real. The teachers aren't doing anything different than they're doing right now.
Not really.
It's, it's just right here.
Yeah, it's, it's designing the plan.
Principals and admin having to do paperwork and this and that, send it all up.
Yeah. And so it, there, it's considerable work for your principals. It's considerable work for your curriculum director, you know what I'm saying? To put all these pieces together, uh, because we have to prove everything, you know what I'm saying? And then once, but once it's proved and it's up, that money flows from TEA. And that's, that's not a part of basic allotment. That's another pile of money that comes straight into the district. So.
Looking at the numbers and the history, we should, we should have a big chunk.
Several teachers that are eligible for this. And so... So again, this is one of those that when I first started, it was kinda, yeah, we're not really excited about that, you know? But I finally came back and said, you know, this is the right thing for you. And it means we gotta do some work, but it's the right thing for you. Because, you know, the difference between whatever your salary is, plus twenty-four thousand dollars is mind-numbing, you know what I'm saying? That, that, that changes everything for a teacher. And so, uh, so the intent is to, you know, one, retain great staff, but also to attract a great staff, you know what I'm saying? And so, if you remember, one of our teachers of the month was a teacher of the year just down the road. And she was presented tonight for outstanding job here. You know what I'm saying? So.
What makes, when you raise goals, what we're doing, makes it easier pill to swallow. Hey, this is what, this is the reason we're doing it right here.
Yeah. So again, it's, it's to make things better for our kids and our staff and financially give them back to our staff for the great things that they do.
Will this money count towards your, to your retirement?
Yes. Yeah, it will count towards retirement. So again, it, it's, it's game changer.
Yeah.
You know? I, I would say you could say, at the difference between retiring at sixty percent of sixty thousand or sixty percent of eighty-five thousand. You know what I'm saying?
And that, that money continues, but they, or they have to continue to hit.
They have to continue to hit. So once they hit the target, they're on target for four years. Y'all went to that last one, I didn't get a chance to go to. Five? So they're on target for five years. They, they gotta still have their T-test scores.
So it just starts over again.
In five years.
Yeah.
If they get it four or five years.
So if Ms. McCarter gets on this, and so in twenty-twenty-seven, she hits it, she gets it until this other, the steps happen again. Cause they're, once again, they're doing the data collection and the all this.
It just keeps going. Got you. And so it is, so again, it's, it's, it's a, it's a lot to it. But the ultimate goal is, you know, we're rewarding it. So again, it's a lot to it, but the ultimate goal is, you know, we're rewarding, we're rewarding, taking care of our staff, because they do a great job for our kids. And who's winning in all that? Our kids, you know what I'm saying? So anyway, the other way they can get some of this money is National Board Certification. I'm not gonna talk much about that, because that's really an bachelor's degree for a teacher, and the most they can get on that's about five thousand. So you're better off going through the performance with, through the district, you know what I'm saying? But there are some teachers that, hey, I don't want to be a principal, I don't want to be this, I just want to be a, I want to be a National Board Certified teacher, and they're guaranteed six thousand dollars, but right there. Anyway, and then this is the last piece, I have some hyperlinks and different pieces, so we're gonna begin talking with the teachers about this as soon as we come back from Thanksgiving, but wanted y'all at least be aware of the staff on this, know where we're going. The whole point is, again, you know, we're trying to improve the economic background for our teachers because of the great performance that they're giving. Any questions on that? All right. Our mid-year employee retention stipend is programmed in, and when I looked at my pay stub today, it looked like it was gonna hit my bank account about midnight tonight. So I'm assuming everybody else is there, too, right, Tommy?
Yeah, it hit mine last night.
Man.
Still haven't seen it.
It put a little work in.
Well, it depends on where you...
Where you bank. Yeah, I know, I hear Manny Sanders coming, "I got paid!" I'm like... Our employee holiday luncheon is December seventeenth. Ms. Holly, that is, what time we start? Ten-thirty? Ten-twenty-five? So Mord, if you're able to join us during that time and come up, and it'll be a great meal, but also visit and rub elbows with our staff, you're always welcome to come up and do that, they love to see you as well. Our fall dinner and ISO training is December the fifth, and that'll be at Region Eight. We'll meet up here... That starts at five, doesn't it, Ms. Holly? Or it starts at six?
Five or five-thirty, I'm sorry.
Starts at six. Starts at six, so we need to leave here by about...
Meal starts at five-thirty.
Five-thirty, so we need to back to four-fifteen-ish. Just about hour fifteen minutes, we don't have to speed near as fast. And so, four-forty, four-fifteen-ish.
So we'll meet y'all.
That's what we did, so.
Assume four-thirty's speed.
We can do that, too. We can do that, too.
I'm not driving.
I believe that is all the superintendent's report, sir. Thank you.
One thing that I didn't hear on anybody's bank account.
Ms. Harold?
Yes, sir.
What day is the bank account, sir?
Twelve, I think. I think it's the twelve, we'll give it a look.
Winter bank account service.
Yes, I think it's the twelve, that Thursday night.
Do we have a time?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Mark that off on the list over there. Are we doing a parade this year, Christmas parade?
Yes, the Christmas parade is the Saturday, it's the seventh. It's on a Saturday night this year.
Yeah, it's not parade, right?
Yeah.
So it's a night parade, and...
Still upset about the no candy, but...
That's right, you cannot wear candy, so...
Can't throw candy, because of that.
Don't come expect candy this year. The city...
You know what the path is they're gonna take? Just so I know how length the truck and trailer I'm gonna be pulling.
Josh, they've not told us yet. They actually have not even sent us the registration flyer. We just were told about it, and so we let the staff know, just so the organizations can start planning, since it is a night parade, something different, but they've not told us what the path is.
Keys to part the other direction.
But yes, we will definitely let you guys know.
Exactly.
Okay, we'll go into executive session at eight-twelve PM. We'll discuss some personnel, according to Texas Governor's Code, section five-five-one. Oh, seven-four, discussion of personnel. Phone executive, take about a five-minute break. So we're coming back into open session at eight-fifty-four. Next item on the agenda is to cast votes about a resolution for a Bowie appraisal district board of directors for twenty-twenty-five. Do we have any nominations from the board?
I nominate Mr. Mike Carter for three years and receive all the votes.
All right, do we have a nomination, any other nominations? All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
For a second?
I'll say it.
All in favor? Mike Carter, three-year term, all votes. Item on the agenda is adjourned, do we have a motion? Motion, do I have a second? Second, all in favor? All polls, Stacy? Thank you.